Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for February 20th. My name is Todd Wilchon. I am the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, fellow Commissioners Bill Avery and Deb Shore. On my right, fellow Commissioner and Vice Chair Jennifer Brinkman. Joining us this morning from the County Attorney's Office is Jennifer Holloway. From the County Clerk's Office, the County Clerk Dan Nolte. And Kelly Lundgren. From the County Board Office, we have our Chief Administrative Officer Carrie Egan and our Chief Deputy Administrative Officer Ann Ames. Now, if you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please start the agenda?
A copy of the rest of the Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE dot gov. Agenda on 100 minutes, approved of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, February 13th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Any discussion or corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two are claims. Approval of all claims processed through February 20th, 2018.
Move approval of all claims.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all the claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three is a special presentation, National Engineers Week. Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer.
So, it's my favorite week of the year, National Engineers Week. And usually, we do a proclamation for National Engineers Week, but we don't really talk about the engineers. And so, over the last four years, I've really worked to build a stellar engineering staff at Lancaster County. I want to talk a little bit about Engineers Week, and then I want to talk a little bit about the engineers who serve you and the county of Lancaster. NSPE, the National Society of Professional Engineers, started National Engineers Week in 1951. I think it's interesting, although I've been a 25-year member of the organization, they did not allow women until the 70s. So, women didn't actually get to start off participating in National Engineers Week. So, it's just another reason to be super excited, especially since my team is represented by 50% women this morning. National Engineers Week is dedicated to ensuring a diverse and well-educated future for the engineering workforce by increasing the understanding and the interest in engineering and technology careers. So, today, I have with me, if you hadn't had a chance to meet all of them, Amanda Kingman, who has 4.5 years of experience in engineering. Her favorite project to date in her career is the mapping of the regulatory floodplains for Adams and Clay County that she did for the Natural Resources District. Amanda's been with us for a little under a year. She's one of the new Engineering One positions that we've added, and we're really excited to have her on the staff. She's brought a lot of things and a lot of new theories to our staff, and so we've seen a lot of improvements. Karen Wilson, who I've actually known for about 25 years, has 16 years of engineering experience. She took a little break and raised her children and came back to engineering. She's a licensed engineer in the state of Nebraska. Her favorite project, and this is a big one, I'm impressed by it, is she designed a system to evaluate the real-time water temperatures of the Missouri River to collect the data to figure out what the release rate needed to be in Gavin's Point Dam to keep the river from freezing, so that barge traffic could keep moving on the river. So, that's a pretty awesome project, Karen, right? Chad Packard, who is not with us today, is our bridge engineer. He has 21 years of experience in bridges and structural design. His favorite project is the Wood River Bridge, which used, wait for it, wait for it, Commissioner Brinkman, high-strength threaded rods for a non-composite deadload continuity and strain compatibility method of analysis. So, needless to say, I'm really glad we have Chad on our bridge team. He's been instrumental to a lot of our modernization projects and to our Bridge to Box Colvert program. Virgil Dearmott, he likes county engineering so much that he retired, and he comes back and hangs out with us part-time. His deal is, is he doesn't like to stay past 11, and he doesn't want to have to deal with regulatory issues. So, Virgil has 36 years of engineering experience. And Commissioner Shore, his favorite project is the Hickman Viaduct.
I knew it.
Right?
Yeah. That was a good one.
It did, but it is a great project, and I think the people of Hickman would tell you they love that viaduct, too. Jim Pelusik, who is not with us this morning, has 38 years' experience. His favorite project, also Commissioner Shore, 68th Street, paving it, including shoulders from Roca Road to Saltillo. And I think that that really made a difference to the people of Hickman. Larry Legg is the newest member of our team. He has actually known me since 1987, when we met in engineering school, and he still came to work for us. Larry has 39 and a half years' experience in engineering. His favorite project to date, because I'm sure you're going to have a Lancaster County one soon, right?
I look forward to it.
Is Highway 20 reconstruction south of Crawford through the Pine Ridge area. And I, of course, get to talk to you all the time, but I have 26 years of experience in civil engineering. My favorite project in the Omaha metro area was Falcon Ridge, in which we preserved the natural drainageway that had wetlands and other aquatic creatures in it. We called it a natural environmental area and platted the houses around it and preserved it. And it's still preserved today, and the residents of that community would tell you it's a very valuable asset. In addition to that, as a woman engineer who designed the trail, I felt it was important that when the trail just stopped at the end and waited for the next subdivision, I built features into the trail so you could turn your stroller around, so that you didn't get your stroller money. And that is what diversity brings to engineering, is just those little tweaks that make life better. So, this is our engineering team. Together, we have over 180 years of engineering experience that we bring to the residents of Lancaster County. Everyone here is dedicated to that and very proud of what they do. Thank you for your time.
And thank you, Minister Brinkman and your staff, for coming today. And yeah, it's a worthy recognition of National Engineers Week, to recognize your work on behalf of the county and the state, actually. So, thank you very much.
It's very humbling to have this experience and to know they're all working together for the same goal. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next is number four, a public hearing. This is a hearing regarding the Lancaster County Rural Transit Project for which financial assistance is being sought from the Federal Transit Administration pursuant to the Federal Transit Act.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for the Lancaster County Rural Transit Project. Anyone here testify in support?
Yes, my name is Mitch Stumpf. I am the...
I'll need to swear your in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My apologies. As we have done in the past, we are seeking funds from the Federal Transit Administration, sharing the amount of up to $80,440. Should we be allowed to try to get that funds? And should those funds be granted? And everything that I have been told by my contacts at the Nebraska Department of Transportation is that they would look favorably upon this. We would be seeking $17,973 in county matching, up to, I should have phrased it that way, which is an increase of 1,276 over last year's request.
Mitch, can you talk a little bit about the purpose of this project? I guess you targeted the elderly and the disabled?
Well, it is public transportation, so anyone is allowed to ride, but 90% of our riders are senior citizens. We have approximately 9% of the folks who ride on an annual basis do have some type of disability, whether that be physical or developmental. But we are looking to increase ridership across all boards. One of those things we've been doing in the last two years is special grocery runs to the Malcolm area, which is getting folks who are not classified in any of those other two positions. And last summer, we did have some experimental routes that didn't go as well as we would have liked, hauling youth in from the smaller communities where swimming pools were not available to the swimming pools in Lincoln. So, and we will be doing that again this year.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you for your testimony. Anyone else in the audience wishing to testify in support of this? Anyone in opposition or in the neutral capacity? Okay, we go ahead and close the public hearing regarding the Lancaster County Transit Project.
Next is number five, new business. Five A is a resolution instructing Lancaster County Public Rural Transit to apply for federal funds available under Section 5311 of the Federal Transit Act, and to use said funds to provide public transportation in Lancaster County and the bordering communities of Adams, Cortland, Suresco, Eagle, and Greenwood.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to instruct the Lancaster County Public Rural Transit to apply for federal funds. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. B is a resolution, amending county resolution R-3-106, making engine braking prohibited as posted.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. I know I talked to you guys about this at the staff meeting last week. I wanted to let you know that I did look up how many current engine braking signs we have. We do have 17. I know that this is an attempt to refine this existing resolution a little bit more. However, I still am concerned that we are going to be posting signs, which I have no engineering ability to approve or deny, which means any sign request I will bring forward to the board. This will add to our sign inventory, and really, it's signing something that is technically already illegal. So, those are my concerns, and I believe we have another citizen here to testify also.
Well, it's not testimony, but it's there. Welcome to comment. Commissioner Shore?
With the comments you just made, how does that affect the 17 existing signs?
Well, I mean, the 17 existing signs, depending on what was chose to do, you know, technically, it's kind of the same thing. Of course, the ordinance or the resolution is currently much briefer, and they exist. I haven't had a chance to ask the Sheriff's Office if they've ever wrote a ticket for engine braking, but that's something I can do. I just think that we need to think this out a little better before we possibly add signs to our inventory that will have a maintenance cost that, in the end, don't really do anything to improve the safety of our roads.
Commissioner Brinkman?
So, the resolution that was presented to us includes language that says, "Whereas the engineer has informed the board that it is in the best interest of the traveling public to install such engine braking-related traffic control devices in the county as applicable." You're saying that is not true. You are not advising us of that.
I really have no ability to deny a sign or recommend a sign for approval in this case. For example, if I'm putting up a blind driveway ahead sign, we do a sight distance calculation that is very finite. If it's recommended, we put up stop signs. We have criteria for putting up the stop sign or not putting up the stop sign, of which I bring forward my recommendation. With this, it would just be if a citizen requests the sign, I believe I have to bring the recommendation forward.
Correct, and that's exactly what we talked about last Thursday, which is, that is up to the board, whether or not we approve that sign installation or not. I mean, that's something that I realize that, you know, that there's not a criteria that an engineer can use to provide a recommendation, but I think, again, these are subjective. And going to Commissioner Shore's point, which is, we already have 17 signs in the county, which, based off of the county attorney and the sheriff, are not enforceable the way the current resolution is written. I mean, so I guess, without this resolution, are you proposing that we go out and remove all those signs?
Well, we could remove the signs, or we could leave them up. I just would like a better solution put into place. My other concern with these signs are, as trucks modernize right now, semis for a number of years, although they have engine brakes, and I believe the issue with the engine braking is the noise. Current machines are built so that the engine brakes have mufflers on them. And, you know, in five years from now, this isn't going to be an issue because there won't be noise with the engine brakes, because all the trucks that wouldn't have the muffler systems on them will be off the road. So, I just want to make sure that we're not creating something, that we're not creating another error by trying to correct an error or an inefficiency in the rules, in essence. So, are we against engine braking because of the noise of the engine braking, or are we against engine braking? I guess is the question. And if you can brake your engine without making the noise, then you're still, I mean, to me, we've alleviated the issue, but that isn't what any of this talks about. It talks about engine braking.
Commissioner Shore?
You said that technology is five or six years down the road.
The technology exists now as older vehicles are aging out. You know, in some cases, like with semis, my research says, for about the last 20 years, the semis have had mufflers on them. As newer trucks get on the road and the older trucks are off the road, the engine brakes are muffled.
So, if that technology is out there now, we should be seeing less requests for engine braking signs that you would be bringing forward for us to make the decision on. So, I mean, the resolution is somewhat legalizing the existing signs and knowing in the future we're going to have fewer requests.
Any requests I get, I'll still have to bring forward.
Jennifer Holloway with the County Attorney's Office. I guess I just want to clear up a few points as to what Pam is bringing up. This, the whole reason this started was because they are complaint-driven. They are mainly complaint-driven because of the noise. So, currently, engine braking is prohibited everywhere in Lancaster County. So, what this resolution is doing is making it prohibited as posted, so it will only be prohibited on roads where it is posted. With that being said, majority of the time, since this is a complaint-driven process, those signs will be asked for because of the noise of the engine braking. So, whether in five years or not, they're going to be mufflers on the engine braking, that's good for the future, but not for the current situation. That's because of the noise issue. Now, one situation where the signs could be not approved is when there is a safety concern. So, that's something we discussed last week's meeting, was the safety issue of when engine braking is actually a good thing, the reason there are engine braking. So, I know in the resolution, you'll see language for the defense highways, and with those, we are, well, the county is not allowed to prohibit engine braking anywhere that has a road degree of more than five degrees. You can kind of imply that that's likely, because if there is a grade of more than five degrees, it's more of a safety issue. So, again, this kind of can go into two routes. Those complaint issues, which are driven by the noise issues, and then if it is a safety issue, then the sign can be denied.
Well, and I think that's an important distinction, which is, to answer your question, Pam, is that I don't think the county board is opposed to the use of engine brakes, because they do serve a purpose in that they're a safety feature. And so, nothing that we are doing, I don't believe should be, or I know should not be construed as something that's, you know, wanting to jeopardize the safety of truck drivers and the public, because, again, those engine brakes serve a purpose. But I think it's in those situations where they're not necessary, and it is a common practice, and it's an annoyance component. I think that's why it's complaint-driven, and when they come forward, we can have those conversations with the person who's wishing for the sign. And if it's something that is a safety issue, I think I'll speak for myself.
Make a motion.
I would deny those, but I guess we'll have to deal with those on a case-by-case basis. And so, Commissioner Avery?
Pam, what is it you would do? Well, you don't like the resolution, but you don't have anything yet to say about what we ought to be doing, or if we ought to be doing anything.
Well, and technically, we have an old resolution. I think that with trucks now having muffled systems for these brakes, and I don't remember how old the existing resolution is, I think that this is something that is sunsetting, and the need for it is going away. And so, my vote would either be to do nothing or to just stop having these signs.
Okay, so going back to my earlier question, so then you would go out and remove those 17 signs?
Correct.
Thanks. Any other questions? I guess, yeah, there's, anyone else wishing to speak about this item? Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the time. My name is Brandon Gunther. I'm the Safety Director with Gena Trucking and Excavating. We run about 80 commercial vehicles, primarily within Lancaster County itself, and really what I have to say has kind of already been said. I just wanted to put forth for consideration that the technology to muffle the engine brakes has been out for several years now, and it's making its way into the mainstream more and more. Granted, you will still hear the loud engine braking, but it's taking time for that technology to make its way through the fleets, but it's there now. We have very few trucks in our fleet that you can still hear the audible engine braking, even in the cab for the driver. It's barely audible when you do use the jake brake on it. And it is a safety issue as well. So, I would just also put forth for consideration, there is a time and a place, certainly, for the engine braking. That's really...
Absolutely, and I mean, nothing that we're doing should be construed as trying to promote, you know, a lack of safety.
Yes, no, I understand that.
Again, and I think, to your point, you know, if you, you know, if we do post it and it's used, and there's a citation, I think the fact that it was used in a safety situation, I mean, I don't see where you would have an issue.
Yeah.
But I think it's in those circumstances where, again, it's an annoyance, and, I mean, we have 17 signs in the county, so there were 17 areas in which, you know, it was determined that it was annoying, and that they were not, use of them were not needed. And so, yeah, I appreciate you. And I know, you know, just for the record, I mean, I think this started because of a project that your company is working on, a soil excavation, which you were very good about coming forward and being very responsible in your leadership of your company, you know, working with adjacent landowners to make sure that, you know, that your company and your drivers are not abusing.
Yeah, and that, I mean, that's something we have the luxury to do, because we stay here. We don't pass through into the next county.
Yeah. So, okay. Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And just a clarification question, if I could.
Yeah, Commissioner Shore.
The existing resolution of 2003 prohibits engine braking everywhere in the county, and you feel is enforceable by law and have recommended this new resolution?
Well, the issue with the first one was that it is not enforceable right now. It's way too broad. It's based off of a nonvalid statute, essentially. So, what we're doing is we're changing it to as posted to update it so it is legally enforceable. So, in the resolution, you'll see we've included the two statutes that you have the authority under, then also the signed, the traffic control device authority that you guys have. So, we added that based off of conversations on Thursday, and then also the provision where it is enforceable, which would be enforceable by sheriff, LPD, State Patrol, all that.
I will move approval of the resolution.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the county resolution involving engine braking. Commissioner Brinkman?
I'd like to amend the motion to remove the second full paragraph on page two, which says, "The engineer informed us it's in the best interest of the public." I don't think it changes the authority that's granted in the resolution, but I don't think it's accurate to include that language. I don't know if that would be acceptable to my colleagues.
I'm open to that.
A motion to amend, so the original?
Friendly amendment accepted.
Okay.
Second.
Perfect.
Also agrees.
Okay, so we have a friendly amendment striking paragraph two involving the county engineer's recommendation. I guess any other discussion?
Paragraph two, the entire paragraph, second full paragraph on page two.
Oh, sorry, second paragraph on page two, which is, okay, I guess is there...
I just wanted to say, if we strike it from this, we're going to have to, going forward, all the sign resolutions also include that language. Essentially, all it's saying is that with the county engineer's background and experience that using such traffic control devices, and it's when applicable, so when it isn't a safety concern, when there has been a complaint-driven, that's all that it's in there. It's not saying every time she brings it forward. It's more just for why she's bringing it forward with her control over the highways, but the board's authority over them.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to...
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay.
Five C is approval of Exhibit A to Resolution R-18-11, Guidelines to Public Participation.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the new guidelines for public participation. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. D is an agreement with Segal Marco Advisors to provide consulting services to Lancaster County regarding the annual investment and administrative review of the county's 401A Retirement Plan and the 457B Deferred Conversation Program. The agreement covers the period from January 1st, 2018, through December 31st, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Segal Marco Advisors. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. E is a maintenance agreement with Microfilm Imaging Systems, Inc., in the amount of $170 for a microfilm reader transport, which is a mechanism in the microfilm reader located in Records and Information Management Department. Term of the agreement is February 1st, 2018, through January 31st, 2019.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the maintenance agreement with Microfilm Imaging Systems. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. F is a contract with A1 First Rate Pumping Service, Inc., to provide the annual service of pumping, hauling, and disposal services for liquid waste products. Term of the contract is March 3rd, 2018, through March 2nd, 2019. The cost of accounting is not to exceed $5,500.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with First Rate Pumping Service. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Five G is an agreement between the Nebraska Commissioners of Labor in Lancaster County for training grants pursuant to the program guidelines and Nebraska Rooker Training Program. The total amount is $3,000. The term of the agreement shall be from February 20th, 2018, through December 31st, 2018.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the Nebraska Commissioner of Labor. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes, sorry.
Motion carries four to zero. H is an agreement between Lancaster County and Kelly Lundgren to provide compensatory employee, to provide non-exempt employee in the county records specialist job, specialist three job classification, compensatory time off in lieu of the compensation for hours worked in excess of forty hours per week. The county will pay the employee at the rate of one and a half hours for each overtime hour, which the employee works up to a maximum accrual of forty hours of compensatory time.
Corey Beatty, County Clerk's Office. Deb might remember, this is a contract we've executed in the past with employees in the same classification as Kelly, allowing them during the summer to, instead of incurring overtime, accumulate compensatory time. So it minimizes the impact on our overtime budget, but allows the employee then later in the fall and the winter to take time off when it might be more convenient to them. So it's just another means of accommodating employees with time off, yeah. So, all right.
Any questions for Ms. Beatty?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Kelly Lundgren. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number six are consigning items. This is amendments to the following contracts.
I have a question. It's probably one of the reasons Bob's coming forward. If I have an item that I have a question on, would you like me to remove it from consent?
Well, how about we go forward and let the county clerk read them, and then?
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan, continue reading.
Okay. C-17-190 with Collegan of Lincoln for the annual supply of water, softener, and salt. The amendment renews the contract for an additional one-year term beginning March 14th, 2018, through March 13th, 2019. The cost of county is not to exceed $9,000. C-15-140 with Production Creek Specialty Advertising for the annual supply of clothing, screen-printed, and/or embroidered apparel. The amendment renews the contract for an additional one-year term beginning April 2nd, 2018, through April 1st, 2019. The cost of county is not to exceed $500. C-11-252 with Correct Care Solutions LLC for healthcare services for the adult detention facility. The amendment extends the contract from March 1st, 2018, through March 31st, 2018. The cost of county is not to exceed $180,000. C-17-203 with Fun Express LLC for the annual supply of craft and hobby supplies. The amendment renews the contract for a term beginning March 14th, 2018, through March 13th, 2019. The cost of county is not to exceed $500. C-17-204 with Lake Shore Learning Materials for the annual supply of craft and hobby supplies. The amendment renews the contract for a term beginning March 14th, 2018, through March 13th, 2019. The cost of county is not to exceed $3,000. C-17-205 with Nasco for the annual supply of craft and hobby supplies. The amendment renews the contract for a term beginning March 14th, 2018, through March 13th, 2019. The cost of county is not to exceed $3,000. C-17-206 with School Specialty for the annual supply of craft and hobby supplies. The amendment renews the contract for a term beginning March 14th, 2018, through March 13th, 2019. The cost of county is not to exceed $5,000. Receive and place on file the county sheriff's report from December 2017. Utility permits for the following. Utility permit number 1637 allowing Lincoln Electric System to close Northwest 40th Street from West Holdridge Street to West Vine Street during normal workouts from February 8th, 2018, through February 13th, 2018. There is no cost to the county. Utility permit number 1638 allowing Nebraska Link Holdings to sell new fiber optic cable under West Holdridge Street from Northwest 126th Street to Northwest 140th Street. There is no cost to the county. Right-of-way contract with the Nebraska Department of Transportation Northwest 27th Street and West Vine Street in the amount of $1,106.
Okay. Mr. Waller?
Bob Waller, county purchasing agent. I am requesting that item A3 be put on hold for one week, in that we have not received the final signed amendment from Correction, or CCS.
Okay.
That was the item I was going to ask to be removed, so I'll ask that we remove 63 from the consent items?
683.
683.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to remove item 683 from the consent items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items as amended. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number seven, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
Okay, anyone from the public wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please continue with the announcements?
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, February 22nd, 2018, at 8:30 a.m. in the Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, February 27th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commission@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move adjourn. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, that concludes the Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to go ahead and start the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting. Mr. Clerk, would you please start the agenda?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall through the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all the material to discuss today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Also, on attendance this morning, Scott Gaines from the county assessor's office. Agenda item one are minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, February 13th, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last Board of Equalization meeting held last Tuesday. Any discussion or corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two are additions and deductions of the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three is a public hearing. This is Motor Vehicle Tax Exemption Applications for Lutheran Family Services, Inc., and Sosser Shrine.
Okay, going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for these two motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Anyone in the audience wishing to testify in support, in opposition, or in the neutral capacity on these applications? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing.